Good evening, I'd like to call the orders of St. Charles City Councilman for Monday, April 7th, 2025. Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Okay.
Here.
Vote.
Here.
Vanguard.
Here.
Munn.
Here.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gamm.
Here.
Patrulla.
Here.
Werble.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will begin with Alderman Gamm.
Good evening. Board, we thank you for the brief hints of spring and the renewal it would bring to our earth. These are challenging and demanding times in our city, state, and country, and we need your strength, wisdom, and guidance to move forward with compassion, integrity, and respect. Grant safety to our police, fire, EMTs, and all city employees as they serve and protect all residents and visitors to our city of St. Charles. Give wisdom and discernment to our mayor, elected and appointed officials, city staff, all city employees during these transitional times. Amen.
Alderman Werble, would you please leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
On behalf of police, join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is it?
No, no. It's my turn.
Me. We have a few presentations this evening, and we're starting with St. Charles North swimmer, Thomas McMillan. And you're here today with your mother, I believe, Lauren. Yes, thank you for being here. And Coach Rooney, you're here. And I'm just going to say a few words about your accomplishments, and then I know Coach Rooney has a few things to say, too. So, Thomas is a sophomore at St. Charles North High School, and you broke the 13-year-old state record 100 Fly with a 46.52. Is that correct? Look at that. You were the state runner-up in the 100 back. Yes, okay. Two-time finalist in the 200 relay. Yes, okay. And 400 free relay. Excellent. And last summer, you broke a national record in the 100 back. Congratulations. That's awesome. And you're only a sophomore, so you have a lot more time to break some more records, right? Well, why don't you come on up here? And Coach Rooney, I'll have you come on up here and say a few words.
I know that Thomas doesn't want to speak, so, but from my heart, it's always a blessing to come up the stairs here and come into this great room and see this community give back and take care of student athletes. Every day on the ride to work, you know, when we drive by and we see signs that say "State Champions" for both schools, it's an honor to have the city embrace that because it makes the community what it is. And it's about achieving greatness and aspiring to be awesome every day, and that's something Thomas does relentlessly. He is a sophomore, and he has great aspirations for bigger things in life than just high school swimming, but we're looking forward to guiding him along the way and working together to make sure he's back here every year with hopefully breaking another state record here or two and have the opportunity to represent the city to the best of his ability. So, Thomas McMillan.
Oh, good. And we know you didn't just come up here to stand up here, you're going to get something, too. So, go ahead.
All right. I just want to thank everyone for recognizing me and having me here today.
Okay, we have some more exciting news. We'll talk about her for a minute. I'd like to bring her mother, Kristin Up, and Kylie. And if any siblings want to come up, and parents, too. I just know Mom's saying a few words. So Kylie, you are also a sophomore at St. Charles North High School, and you are on the skating team from North Park or North Brook called Team Elite. It's the first USA team to win a gold medal at the World Synchronized Ice Skating Competition, and it took place in Sweden. Yes. So, Mom, maybe you can tell us a little bit about your journey and Kylie's journey. You're welcome to say a few words, too, if you like.
Well, first of all, thank you. This is a huge achievement for her, but exciting that our town is recognizing this. Kylie has been skating since she was four, and then on a synchronized team 12 years. It's been a journey. I would say I tease, but she's a mortgage payment. But this is the first year that we went international, so first time we went to Czech Republic, we got second place. Then we went to Dresden, Germany, where we got first place. And then we went up against 23 teams, 19 different countries, and this was the first time that a US team brought home the gold medal, and that was in Gassenberg, Sweden.
So, congratulations to you because you also get a street sign, and this is amazing. We have two sophomores that have plenty of time left here at St. Charles North. I know we have big hopes for you. Here you go. Would you like to take a photo? He is the chairman of the Natural Resources Commission, and we all know that Arbor Day is coming up at the end of the month. So Arbor Day is April 25th, '25, and I'm going to read the proclamation, and I've invited Lauren to say a few words about his work on the Natural Resources Commission. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas on Arbor Day, we also recognize the importance of all of our natural resources in sustaining a healthy natural environment. And whereas we plant trees to serve as a natural habitat for birds and other living things, we also maintain special community gardens such as the butterfly garden outside of City Hall to encourage pollinators, especially the monarch butterfly, and to increase awareness of pollinator habitats. Now therefore, I, Laura Vitak, Mayor of the City of St. Charles, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the City of St. Charles, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And I know that last year, we worked with schools to make sure that they plant, other students plant trees, and I know you're very involved in trees, so I'd like for you to say a couple of words about Arbor Day.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for all your support over the, you know, past through your term and even prior. And I know we have a couple of our commissioners here, and you want mine just briefly standing. Thank you so much for your work in Arbor Day. So this year, we are planting a tree at Anderson School in celebration of Arbor Day, and we are also going to have a new event this year, which is Touch a Tree Truck, which is kind of a takeoff on the Touch a Truck for Kids. It's going to be held. We're going to stage it in the old police department parking lot, and we will be having some information coming out here shortly, but that will be coming up as well, as well as hopefully we can put together some plans and some things for increasing butterfly gardens and gardens for pollinators throughout the city. So those are all things that we are working on as well as Arbor Day. And again, thank you for your support.
Okay, and Alderman Besner, the omnibus vote could...
Thank you, Mayor Vitak. I'd like to make a motion to approve the omnibus vote with item A11 from Government Operations removed.
Second.
Moved by Besner, seconded by Werble. Any comments or questions? Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Okay.
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
Vanguard.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gamm.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Weber.
Thank you. We do not have any old business or any new business, but under Committee Report, Government Operations, Alderman Weber.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Vitak. In regards to items A1 and A2, A11 is also connected to that. That's why it was removed from the omnibus. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve A1, A2, and A11.
Second.
Moved by Weber, seconded by Werble. Any questions for Deputy Chief Speaker? No? Okay. Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Okay.
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
Vanguard.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gamm.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Government Services, Alderman Vanguard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have one item, B1. I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution awarding directional boring services to York Construction and Management Company, also known as York Utility Services, for a one-year period beginning May 1st, 2025 through April 30th of 2026.
Second. Moved by Vanguard, seconded by Munn. Any comments or questions? Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Okay.
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
Vanguard.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gamm.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Government Services, Alderman Vanguard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have one item, B1. I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution awarding directional boring services to York Construction and Management Company, also known as York Utility Services, for a one-year period beginning May 1st, 2025 through April 30th of 2026.
Second. Moved by Vanguard, seconded by Munn. Any comments or questions? Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Okay.
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
Vanguard.
Yes.
Munn.
Yes.
Lencioni.
Yes.
Gamm.
Yes.
Patrulla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Weber.
Thank you. Government Services, Alderman Lencioni. Anything further?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Do we have any public comments this evening?
Hello, I'm Hewlett Prueker. I live in St. Charles. I'm going to talk very briefly about IMEA. What else? In fact, I'm going to read the introduction and the conclusion of a report written by Stephen Abbott of RMI, which is a nonprofit think tank helping communities with energy procurement. So now I'm quoting his report. And before I start, I have sent the entire report to Nancy to include in your packets and to send around. It's too much to have me read it, and you're not going to remember it, but it's very, it's well-written, it's easy to read, I could understand it, so it's worth your while to please read it. Okay, so I'm quoting him. "To the city of Naperville, the village of Winnetka, and the city of St. Charles, at the request of local citizens in your communities, I am writing to provide insights based on my experience in energy supply contracts to inform your ongoing deliberations. As a principal at RMI, a nonprofit, nonpartisan think and think tank, I have spent the last 11 years advising communities, companies, and universities on their energy procurement strategies. In line with RMI's mission, I currently oversee a team of 10 energy experts, helping communities pursue a clean, prosperous, zero-carbon future for all. I have been impressed by the collective attention and effort your communities have put into evaluating your energy supply options. I also want to recognize that you are being asked to make a meaningful, long-term decision in the face of significant uncertainty, conflicting priorities, and national political turmoil. My intention in this memo is to supplement the information supplied by others, including Mark Pruitt and Customized Energy Solutions, and provide insights on four points. Number one, power marketers offer alternative supply options. Number two, flexibility is an important consideration in energy supply contracts. Number three, current renewable energy prices are right now unusually high. And number four, electricity demand should be actively managed to lower supply costs." And then the conclusion, and so in between, he gives reasons, explanations for those four points, so that you can understand them. So now I quote him again. "In conclusion, as Naperville, Winnetka, and St. Charles consider their future energy procurement strategy, my hope is that this memo provides useful insights on a few points. Number one, your communities have a variety of power supply options that could be considered, including power marketers with large existing generation fleets. Number two, energy markets are expected to be increasingly dynamic, and as such, it may be prudent to anticipate greater volatility due to shifts in regulatory priorities, rapid technological advances, and increasing investment. In a dynamic, uncertain environment, it may be worth making strategic investments to retain flexibility and limit your community's exposure to long-term asset, regulatory, and provider risks. Number three, renewables have a long track record of being low-cost and are likely to continue to benefit from economies of scale over the medium to long term. The recent price increases in wind and solar in Illinois should be understood as a recent phenomenon, driven by supply and demand forces that will likely prompt both markets and policy reactions and shifts. Number four, a community's overall energy demand and capacity requirements can and should be actively managed in an integrated fashion with supply decisions to reduce communities' overall costs. Thank you for your attention and consideration. If you have questions on the above points of perspective, I would be happy to meet with you to discuss these matters further. Regards, Stephen Abbott," and it has his Weber address. So, thank you for listening to me, his statement. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Hello, my name's Greg Taylor, and I would like to address an issue that came up at last month's Government Services meeting. During that meeting, Alderman Werble was talking to Peter Sur, and he wanted to know if the city could issue a request for information regarding third-party power generation. And at that time, City Administrator McGuire interrupted the conversation, and she stated that such meeting would have to happen behind closed doors. And the reason for that, that she gave, was because the conversation of possible elimination of current city jobs may be brought up. I want to make it clear that no one from Tri-City Clean Energy has ever advocated for the reduction or removal of the current city utility. To the contrary, many of us have stood up here, and heap praise on that group, and for good reason, they do a great job for us. Additionally, I haven't heard any of you ever say anything about wanting to change the current city utility, not once. So there is no reason for any discussion regarding a possible reduction of a city job to happen during an information meeting regarding a new third-party power generator. It just should not come up, and you can make sure that would be the case. If you write this request for information and limiting the scope of what you're requesting, just request information for everything that IMEA provides us, that is, the power, the transmission, and their services. And if you limit the scope to that for your request for information, that's what you're going to get, and no conversation is going to come up about any reduction of jobs that no one, that I've ever heard, is interested in. If IMEA can present in an open, public meeting and give their side of the story, their competitors should be allowed to speak in an open, public meeting and tell us what they can do for us or not do for us. A decision to limit such a presentation to a closed-door meeting would only raise eyebrows in the community. The Tri-City Clean Energy Group, hundreds of petition signees, and the citizens of St. Charles are just asking for one thing. We want an objective, thorough, and transparent review of options to IMEA before any signing of a new contract is made. That's it. We're not asking for much. I want to refer back to a letter that I sent to this council and to the current mayor back in July of 2024. At that time, I encouraged this council and the mayor to use a task force similar to the DAM committee to study this issue. A properly selected task force membership with a well-thought-out charter instructed to hold their meetings in public forums would ensure that the outcome of their investigation would be an unbiased, transparent, well-vetted recommendation for you, the council, to make a well-informed decision on this most important issue. I encourage the new city council and the new mayor that will be sworn in soon to reconsider using this type of a process to study this issue. That's what I have to say about the IMEA contract. On a different note, I just want to mention that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and King County has an outstanding organization that tries to address this issue. The name of the organization is CASA, and they desperately need volunteers to address a most dire need. So, anyone here listening to this, if you have time, if you want to make a difference in a child's life, please look into that organization and consider volunteering. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment?
Good evening. My name is Maureen Stillman, and I'm the chair of the Energy Committee of the Naperville Environmental and Sustainability Task Force, a citizen volunteer group and official task force of the city of Naperville. St. Charles has the option to include commercial power marketers in their announces of alternatives to the IMEA. These include companies like Nextera, Constellation, and NRG. St. Charles has the option to keep their local municipal utility as it stands currently, but use one or more commercial power marketers. For the last year, we have been talking to Nextera and Constellation about their capabilities and energy qualifications. They can provide electric power and services to both Naperville and St. Charles, the same as IMEA currently provides. Therefore, your local electric utility would remain independent with the same business model that it has today, and there would be no need for St. Charles Electric Utility to hire additional staff, or, as the prior gentleman said, let go of anyone. So everything would stay the same. You would just be using a different energy and service supplier. We believe that holding a competitive bid among a number of commercial power providers would provide the best insight into what these companies can offer. They also can provide pricing for the energy mixes that you choose for natural gas, wind, solar, battery storage, and nuclear. They can run the numbers for different scenarios with different percentages for each energy Note that the contract extension that IMEA has proposed does not include any price commitments, and there are risks concerning prices. For example, coal-powered facilities need significant funding for major maintenance after 25 years, and in 2036, that Prairie State will be 25 years old. The recent CES report for Naperville neglected to include options for using commercial power marketers in their study. We believe that a detailed investigation and analysis of competitive energy suppliers should be performed by releasing a request for information, as the prior speaker said, or a request for proposal, followed by a competitive bid process. This would provide a clear view of all the options and competitors on a level playing field. In this manner, the city will have a strong bargaining position and negotiate the best contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Martha Goss. I'm going to piggyback on what the previous presenters have talked to you about, and I'll abbreviate mine because they made some of the points. But it was definitely evident at the Government Services meeting that there was a confusion about the energy supply and how everything works together. So just to put a big picture together for you, you've got the energy providers, and these are what Hewley referred to as the power providers in the RMI report, and Greg called them the third-party power generator, Maureen called them the commercial power marketer. This is all the same name for that group that provides energy. What they do is actually produce the electrons and put them onto the grid. That's that outfit. The next portion of the whole energy picture that we're painting is the grid operator. Our area grid operator is PJM. PJM's responsible for regulating and managing the energy from the energy providers to ensure that each utility and their customers have constant reliable energy minute by minute. They do this for the city of St. Charles, they do it for ComEd, and all the other utilities. We don't have a choice on who our grid provider is. That's PJM. And then the third part of this is the electric utility, and Greg was making the point that that's the city, that it's the company that municipalities and private companies like manufacturing plants or data farms use to provide and maintain the physical wires and the other electrical transmission items. So for us, that's the city. Like they've stated, we have no interest in getting rid of them as an electric utility. When a tree falls on the power line, these are the people that come to do the repair. Also, at the Government Services meeting, one of the speakers pointed out that less than 95% of the power outages are associated with the grid failure. That's PJM. Most of the power outages happen at the local level and are the responsibility of the electric utility, so in our case, that's the city. So how these three work together is those big energy providers that I talked about the first group, put the electrons on the grid. the grid operator for us. So the energy provider contract, with that contract, what we would be doing is buying into an energy source. And to make an analogy, it's like a sponsorship. If we continue to buy from IMEA, we're sponsoring energy that comes 80% from burning coal. Right now, we have an opportunity to look into alternatives, and we're hoping the city can sponsor energy that comes from cleaner sources. Okay. A separate point that seemed to be overlooked at the Government Services meeting was the point that this open bid process that Maureen was talking about. And Bill Cale made this point. He said 80% of the industrial customers use the open market to bid their contracts. So they're not going to JAA's like IMEA and NIPA. They're going out to these other energy providers. This points to the likelihood that they're getting bulk power discounts that individuals can't get. Greg Taylor in a previous meeting told you his experience at the plant he worked at where this was true. St. Charles uses enough energy that we should be able to get these bulk power discounts too. And if we joined other communities, presumably, we could get even a better deal. Another comment unrelated to the summary above is in Peter's presentation to the council, he stated that IMEA does not have a carbon capture project. This is true, but he neglected to add that Prairie State does have one. And since IMEA has partial ownership in Prairie State, if Prairie State put it to vote to proceed with that, we would have only one of nine votes to voice our opinion on whether to go forward with that carbon capture. And then one final point that Bill put pretty succinctly was when he said, "It's a horse race right now between fossil fuels, nuclear, and renewables." And like he stated, fossil fuels have a head start in the race. Now is when we have to pay attention to renewables, and it's premature to assume that we'll never have enough renewable energy. We should review all the contracts presented in an open bid. One point of evaluation should be pricing. Another point should be which horse we want to back. Do we want to back continued use of fossil fuels for as long as possible, or do we want to help build a sustainable future for the next generation? And not all the decisions are easy. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
Hello, my name is Tom Trucker. I'm in the Fifth Ward. I'm here representing Susan Rousseau, who I can't make it tonight because of a family illness, and she gave me-
Sir, can you just step a little bit closer to the microphone so anyone else can hear you? Thank you.
Okay. I have a copy of her talk, which I'm going to read, and I'd like to give it to the record. Do I just bring it over there? Okay. Okay. So Susan is a resident of Batavia. Tonight, Batavia City Council is having its first meeting with a consultant who will conduct several utility studies, including an integrated resource plan, sometimes called As I hope you also know, Batavia's contract with NIPA and Prairie State to 2055 severely limits its opportunities to incorporate renewable energy resources into its portfolio over the next 30 years. The IRP will likely be able to offer Batavia options that only nibble around the edges of its coal-based electricity. In contrast, St. Charles has a unique opportunity to break free from the constraints of its contract with IMEA and Prairie State. St. Charles' power sales contract with IMEA terminates in 2035. St. Charles' debt obligation to IMEA for the construction of Prairie State will be paid in full by 2035. St. Charles' decommissioning obligations for the closure of Prairie State Plant will be paid in full by 2035. These facts give St. Charles an opportunity that is not available to Batavia or Geneva, the opportunity to run, not walk away from IMEA, and the coal-powered electricity that IMEA electricity is offering to St. Charles for the next 25 to 30 years. Please do not enter into a new contract with IMEA. Issue a request for information to market power providers to get factual information that can be used to compare these providers to what IMEA is offering before you make a final decision. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have one more?
Good evening. My name is Bill Cale. I just have a brief mention for tonight. A couple of times during our groups coming up here to speak, there's been mention of the number of 76 deaths per year from the Prairie State Coal Plant. And it may sound like an oddly specific number, that somebody should have 76 deaths. And I'm sure if anyone was walking down the streets of Marissa every week or two and dropping dead, people would have noticed that. So you might wonder, how can something be that big a problem and have so little notice to it? And it comes from the Clean Air Task Force study, and they published a report, an interactive map, that they've been doing over the decades, called Toll from Coal, and they used information from the EPA and other data sources, and accumulating over the past five decades on how much the impact is from particulate matter in the atmosphere to the population around them. So the number 76 is a bit of an unusual thing, but it's probably just the result of a fraction dividing the number of people in the area by the amount of pollution that's persistent in that area over time. It would suggest that, more likely than not, 76 people have died premature deaths, mostly from cardiovascular disease, stroke, and heart attacks. So that was where that number came from. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? Okay. Additional items for me? I don't have any, but I believe Alderman Lencioni has.
Yes, I do. I have something. So, in politics, it's said that you shouldn't do anything that you don't want to show up on the first page of the local newspaper. And along with that, sunshine is the best medicine. So following that, I have a few questions about David Petrella's behavior in the recent election. First of all, I'll no longer be serving, and I welcome Vicki Spellman to this seat. She's a talented person, and she's going to do a great job. But apart from that, I faced an opponent who, David Petrella, for his own personal reasons, and for whatever quest of power, has recruited to run against me, and I wasn't the only person.
A point of order, please.
No, I have the floor. Excuse me.
You can make his comments. There's no one arguing.
Keep it in the zone.
It's inappropriate to be campaigning in a city hall.
No, I have the floor.
Excuse me. I am the mayor.
So-
He can make his comments, or welcome the comment.
You could disagree if you'd like, you know, but I don't care. So, you know, and other times, I mean, he worked on this for two years. He asked Phil Kessler to help him in a committee to replace Paul Lencioni, and then once he found somebody, did everything possible in my race, writing text messages, blasphemous representing my record. He had zero compunction for telling lies about me and other people that he was working against. And this isn't just about me, you know, disparaging other people's moral character. And David has shown himself again and again to be no kind of leader for St. Charles. For the past four years, I've heard about David bullying leaders, intimidating business owners, and others, and with his position, and a lot of people in our community are tired of it. St. Charles needs leaders to lift others up. And David's shown that lack of character and moral strength, and David, you should resign. You know, you can't carry the burden of public trust even down the hall. You know, and you can count as much sunshine as we can muster until you accept that you are not fit for this duty. I promise the sun will be shining bright for the next two years. You've hurt our, harmed our community for too long. We've had enough. St. Charles deserves better.
Does anyone else have a comment?
I just will cut. I understand you have a right to speak whatever you want. I just think it's really inappropriate to bring that into this chamber. This is not the place for that.
Oh, in public? It is.
I have the floor, sir.
Alderman Werbal is speaking.
I just think it's really inappropriate to bring campaigning here in the chamber. It's not the appropriate venue for it. You can certainly hear your grievance with him if you have it, but very disappointing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, Alderman Werbal.
This is the most inappropriate thing I've heard in this council in a long time. I cannot believe we're dealing into a political issue about an election that is over. Completely inappropriate. I'm very disappointed. I'm very disappointed in this.
Does anyone else have a comment?
I have a response. We're not talking about elections. We're talking about conduct. We're talking about moral character. So don't confuse the issue. We should all be holding the conduct.
Okay.
No, you're right.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Who are you to judge the moral character? I don't know who you are to tell everybody else that this person's inappropriate behavior. No, no. No one has that power to say that without any proof, without any proof even.
Does anyone else have a comment about this? Anyone? Okay. We do have an executive session after Alderman Werbal's committee. Does the staff have anything? No? Okay, so then at this point, I need a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Moved by Dem, seconded by Munn. Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Kegger?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Van Gert?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Dem?
Yes.
Petrella?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.